Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 28th meeting of the Florissant City Council. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we take the roll tonight, I wanted to announce again our new format about hearing from citizens. As you'll notice in the table over by the door, if you wish to speak to the council during the Hearing from Citizens portion of the meeting, I'd ask you to please fill out the little card that's over there and put it in the box, and then we will get it up here before the Hearing from Citizens program. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Seeing we have a quorum, I call this meeting to order. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from our meeting on October 14th. Are there any additions or corrections? Mr. Lee moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda is our approval of minutes from our work session on October 14th. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Mr. Gribb moves for approval, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor? Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a resolution from Ms. Karen McKay.
Go ahead and pass it first. You're going to tell them we're going to pass it first. They're going to vote on it first.
We're going to vote on this first, and then we will present it to Mayor and I at the podium.
Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Florissant congratulating Karen McKay for being named Leader of the Year by the Cancer Action Network of the American Cancer Society.
Ms. Pagano moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor? Aye.
Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Florissant congratulating Karen McKay for being named Leader of the Year by the American Cancer Society, American Cancer Action Network of the American Cancer Society, sorry.
Mr. Caputa moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Clerk, please poll the council.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez. Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Florissant congratulating Karen McKay for being named Leader of the Year by the Cancer Action Network of the American Cancer Society.
We need to do the final vote.
I'll move for a third, seconded by Mr. Stinnett. All those in favor? Aye. Go ahead. Before the final vote, is there anyone out there who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez. Passes.
Resolution passes. Ms. Gribb?
Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Florissant congratulating Karen McKay for being named Leader of the Year by the Cancer Action Network of the American Cancer Society, whereas the annual Leader of the Year award is given to the lead congressional district volunteer who has demonstrated unfailing leadership and advocacy for the American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network, and whereas Karen McKay is a tireless volunteer and dedicated cancer advocate, organizing local volunteers and being an advocate for strong and effective cancer fighting public policy in her community, whereas Karen leads the Ambassador Constituent Team in Congressional District One, serving as the primary volunteer contact with District One lawmakers and recruits. She also manages other local volunteers to lead district advocacy and fundraising efforts, whereas Karen has attended every Missouri and federal Lobby Day event in several years, personally visiting with over 20 legislators to gain support for bills such as the Quality of Life Bill, and whereas Karen has been a volunteer with the American Cancer Society for many years as a leader for her local Relay for Life event, and has volunteered with the American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network since it began over 10 years ago, whereas Karen's Florissant business was a corporate sponsor of the Wall of Hope banner displayed on the National Mall, whereas Karen helped establish the Look Good Feel Better program in her area for cancer patients, whereas Karen is nationally recognized for her participation in the Locks of Love program and continues to aggressively lobby the legislators for cancer research, whereas Karen McKay received the 2013 Leader of the Year Award from the Cancer, American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network, and now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and City Council of the City of Florissant that they offer their sincere congratulations for a well-deserved title of Leader of the Year awarded by the Cancer Action Network of the American Cancer Society.
Karen, you've always been generous to many causes here in the Florissant Valley by donating money and also your famous gift baskets to many, many worthy causes, too numerous to mention, but your top of the list item that you've always been such a leader on is to fight cancer, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate it even more this year because it affected me very personally with the loss of my brother, and just thank you for everything you're doing to help wipe out this terrible disease.
Karen, I want to thank you for all your hard work at every level of government, from the federal and at the state level. I love seeing those pictures when you're up in Washington or in Jeff City, and you're very deserving of this award, and I congratulate you, and please keep up the good work. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Karen?
They gave me a microphone. Oh, my gosh. I just want to thank my city, the City of Florissant, for this wonderful honor. I'm beyond words. It was a wonderful surprise in Washington back in September. It's been a, there's so many people that work so hard in the fight against cancer, but we're going to make this a national priority. As an advocate for the first congressional district, I have cards here for all the council members for the Cancer Action Network, and I'd like each one of them to make sure they stay in contact with our state and federal government and make cancer a national priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here's cards. Thank you. It's nice being on this side, guys.
Mr. Hernandez told me that there are no cards filled out in the box over there. So next on the agenda, we have Communications. There are none. Next on our agenda, we have Public Hearings. Public Hearing 13-10-024.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue Saint-François on Monday, October 28, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment to Special Use Permit Number 4892 to Dr. Paul Heron to allow for the replacement of a sign in an R4 zoning district for the property located at 395 Durhakee Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630-8955142.
Good evening. Do I need to use the, over there? Okay. The current sign I have is approximately 25 years old. My office is at the corner of Washington and Durhakee. It is zoned residential with a grandfather clause. It's been a dental office for over 50 years. Approximately 25 years ago, Planning and Zoning City Council approved the sign and planting area. I went in front of Planning and Zoning twice and amended my original plans, and what I want to do is use the same planting area and replace the sign. This is also a low pedestal type sign. The current sign is 84 inches wide and 29 inches high. This sign will be larger. It's 96 inches wide and 40 inches high. It's a solid construction material, and it's painted, and then also it will be lit at night. Anybody have any questions?
Hi, Dr. Heron. I had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Heron about this and look at it, and he has changed the signing. I assume over the traffic issue. You're going to have the uplights on the sign, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and he keeps his property very nice, and it's a great establishment, and he's been there forever, his practice has.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. Anyone else? Dr. Heron, I know you downsized. You used to be on Riley Court, so I'm glad you still have your business in Florissant. I appreciate that.
Yes, yeah, we moved a year and a half ago.
Sad to see you go. Anyone else on council? Before I close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, Ms. Pagano moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, doctor.
All right, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have another public hearing. Public Hearing 13-10-025.
In accordance with Section 405-310 of the Florissant Zoning Code, a public hearing will be held by the City Council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rue Saint-François on Monday, October 28, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment to Special Use Permit Number 3086 as amended by ordinances 4640, 4875, 5210, and 6492. To Morello's Convenient Mart Incorporated, DBA MC Food Mart BP, to allow for the digital sign, a digital sign in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 425 North Highway 67. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 8397630 or TDD 8395142.
Is Mr. Dennis Morello here?
What you need to know.
Could you, could you please tell the council what you plan to do with your...
My intention is to remove a sign...
Could you just please, a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
My intention is to move the sign, or remove the lidded sign I have now, price sign, and replace it with a digital one, so that the numbers are starting to fall apart as we take them up and down continuously.
Mr. Gribb?
I went over to visit Mr. Morello and talk about this sign several weeks ago, and essentially what he wants to do is not have to climb up and change the numbers anymore and sit down there with a remote and change his prices, modernize the sign, make it a digital...
Correct. I think there's pictures and stuff in the packet. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it.
I'm in full agreement and support of this thing.
Thank you, Mr. Gribb. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
I was just going to encourage you to have antifreeze in the windshield wiper thing in the winter time. It's just a suggestion.
All right. I appreciate you all. I appreciate that.
I always liked that combination like, you know, 50 flavors of soda, kerosene, and hot dogs. That always kind of made me laugh, but if you're selling it, that's all that matters. Anyone else on the council? Before I close this public hearing, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, Mr. Gribb? Oop, I'm sorry.
Do I need to sit down, or I'm...
No. It's not going to be long. I agree with the signage. The only thing is, I wish that, I wish your sign was out further to the street, like Quick Trip is, because it's really difficult for me to see your gas prices when I'm driving down Lindberg, because it's hidden by the building almost, because it sits right up against the building. I wish, maybe we should have a flashing or something, but that's the only problem I have with the sign. I approve of it, so go ahead and approve it.
Seeing no one else, Mr. Gribb moves to close this public hearing, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor? Aye. Next on the agenda, we have Old Business, ordinance number 8943. The petitioner has contacted us, and they're asking for postponement to our November 11th meeting. Mr. Lee?
I didn't really...
I will move to postpone this public hearing to November 11th. Seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor? Aye. Next on the agenda, we have ordinance number 8945. I'll move for, I'll move for a second, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance amending Special Use Permit Number 7318, transfer to Severn Washington LLC, DBA Uncle Bob Self Storage, to allow for two buildings in an M1 limited industrial district on the property located at 450 West Washington.
I'll move for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye.
Ordinance amending Special Use Permit Number 7318, transfer to Severn Washington LLC, DBA Uncle Bob Self Storage, to allow for two buildings in an M1 limited industrial district for the property located at 450 West Washington.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Bill 8945 becomes ordinance number 7997. Next on the agenda is Bill 8946. Mr. Caputa moves for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor?
Ordinance authorizing amendment to an existing B5 ordinance to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road.
Mr. Lee moves for a third, Mr. Hernandez will second it. Clerk, please poll the council. All in favor?
Ordinance authorizing amendment to existing B5 ordinance to allow for a sit-down carryout restaurant for the property located at 3524 Patterson Road.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Bill 8946 becomes ordinance number 7998. Next on the agenda is ordinance number, bill number 8947. Mr. Egan moves for a second. I will second that. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance amending Sections 315, Section 315-160, and adopting a new Section 315-110 of the Florissant Code of Ordinances regarding traffic signals and public safety at intersections.
Mr. Egan moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance amending Section 315-160 and adopting a new Section 315-110 of the Florissant Code of Ordinances regarding traffic signals and public safety at intersections.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Bill 8947 becomes ordinance number 7999. Next on the agenda is Bill 8949. Mr. Lee moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance approving Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, fiscal year, it's actually 2014, Annual Action Plan for the City of Florissant, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such a plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. Stinnett moves for a third. I will second that. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance approving Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, fiscal year 2014, Annual Action Plan for the City of Florissant, Missouri, and authorizing and directing the mayor to submit such a plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing no one, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Bill 8949 becomes ordinance number 8,000. Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8950. Ms. Pagano moves for a second, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $30,000 from Sewer Lateral Fund to Account Number 8050 Professional Services for additional residential sewer lateral repairs.
Mr. Gribb moves for a third, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $30,000 from the Sewer Lateral Fund to Account Number 8050 Professional Services for additional residential sewer lateral repairs.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter?
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Ward 4. I was wondering what this $30,000 is for. I didn't, I didn't take the time to read the form on the, online, and does this have to do with the, the transfer of professional funds for the videos or something? What is the professional...
Mr. Mayor?
No, we just have more volume. We have more requests. We're doing more sewer lateral repairs this year.
Okay, I understand. I was just curious if it was, because I knew that we were doing, doing everything all the way through, and I just wanted to make sure that, I wasn't, like I said, I came unprepared with reading about that. Saturday kind of took it out of me, but anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Next on the agenda, we have substitute bill 8951. I will move to, to accept the substitute bill, seconded by Mr. Egan. All those in favor? Aye.
Can I make a motion for a second?
I'll make a motion for a second, seconded by Mr. Gribb. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $11,000 from, $11,000 from Account Number 4913 Employee Benefits to Account Number 4924 Telephone for additional telephone expenses.
Mr. Schmidt moves for a third, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $11,000 from Account Number 4913 Employee Benefits to Account Number 4924 Telephone for additional telephone expenses.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Bill S. 8951 becomes ordinance number 8002. Next on the agenda, we have New Business, Board Appointments. Next on the agenda, we have Request in Ward 5, a request for a full packaged liquor license for RKA Gigar Patel Enterprises LLC, doing business as A&amp;M Market, located at 145A Graham Road. I'll move for approval. Clerk, will you please have a roll call vote? Seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Roll call vote, please.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Request is granted, Mr. Patel. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a request in Ward 6, request for a full liquor by the drink license for NOCO Entertainment Inc., doing business as Show Me's, Show Me's located at 1792 New Florissant Road. Mr. Stinnett moves for approval, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Roll call vote, please.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez.
Request has been granted. Good luck, Mr. Cody. Next on the agenda, we have Bills for First Reading, Bill 8952.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to Special Use Permit Number 4892 to Dr. Paul Heron to allow for the replacement of a sign in an R4 zoning district for the property located at 395 Durhakee Road.
Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8953.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to Special Use Permit Number 3086 as amended by ordinance numbers 4640, 4875, 5210, and 6492 to Morello's Convenient Mart Food Mart Incorporated, DBA MC Food Mart BP, to allow for a digital sign in a B3 zoning district for the property located at 425 North Highway 67.
Next on the agenda, we have Bill 8954.
Ordinance amending Section 380-160 Seat Belts by deleting Section C in its entirety and replacing it with a new section.
Ms. Egan?
Move for a second reading.
Ms. Egan moves for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. All those in favor? Aye.
Ordinance amending Section 380-160 Seat Belts by deleting a subsection C in its entirety and replacing it with a new section.
Ms. Egan moves for a third. I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Lee, Gribb, Egan, Caputa, Shildroth, Stinnett, Pagano, Schmidt, Hernandez. Ordinance amending Section 380-160 Seat Belts by deleting subsection C in its entirety and replacing it with a new section.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on this? Please come forward.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. Once again, I feel like one of the regular residents of Florissant here, because I didn't read this, and I was just wondering what the new section is, what the new section's going to be reading as, because the people out here, I don't think they understand what's going on in this bill. I don't either. I mean, I don't. Could you explain that, please? The new section?
Read it, Kevin.
No, can I have the Cliff Notes version, please? Just, you know, just...
Can I give you a copy?
Pardon me?
Would you like a copy?
Well, how do I know if I, if I approve it or not? Because you're going to go for three readings, correct?
Yeah.
I downloaded the, I downloaded the copies of the, of the agenda, for the agenda for the work session.
City clerk can answer your question, Ms. O'Donnell. Go ahead.
Pardon me?
The city clerk can answer your question.
All it does is delete the section where the police officers cannot pull over a person for not wearing a seatbelt. It deletes one section. It's one sentence.
So, so it's not replacing it with anything?
It's deleting a section out of that whole section, yes.
Okay.
It's deleting one sentence. It's deleting one sentence.
Okay, so there's nothing else going in place of that section? Okay, fine.
Mr. Schmidt, you're okay, right? Okay, thank you. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Gribb?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldrough?
Yes.
Stinnett?
Yes.
Spigano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Bill eighty-nine fifty-four becomes ordinance number eight zero zero three.
Ordinance appropriating $500,000 from General Revenue Fund to establish a property revitalization fund.
Next on the agenda, we have bill eighty-nine fifty-six.
Ordinance creating and establishing a Florissant Homeowners Assistance Program.
Next on the agenda, we have bill eighty-nine fifty-seven.
Ordinance creating and establishing a Florissant Property Acquisition Program.
Next on the agenda, we have bill eighty-nine fifty-eight.
Ordinance approving reallocation of funds for the Community Development Block Grant budget for the 2012-2013 funding.
Mr. Hernandez?
She doesn't want it to be three readings, but she asked for it not to be. If I didn't... You're right, she called me and told me that. I apologize.
Next on the agenda, we have council announcements. Mr. Lee?
I just kind of feel bad, because Kirk's here today, and we haven't asked him a single question, so... But I really don't have a question for him. I just wanted to make an announcement that on Wednesday, November 13th, I'm going to be having a ward meeting at JFK Community Center, and we're going to be having a meeting either at 11 o'clock a.m. or at 7 o'clock p.m. The mayor's going to be joining me, and we hope to have representatives there from the CERT program and Neighborhood Watch, so they'll be given a brief presentation and looking for people that might be interested in being involved in that. I also wanted to just take the opportunity to say that after many, many months of hard work with the mayor, Carol Amara, John Hessel, and the city council, we've introduced three bills today that I think are going to be very exciting for the city of Florissant. One of these bills is going to be establishing a fund for neighborhood revitalization, and the other one that I'm very excited about is the bill that will be establishing a homeownership assistance program. And briefly, what it's going to do is it's going to give the opportunity for people that do not currently own a house in the city of Florissant that wish to move here. They will be able to apply for a loan in the amount of up to $6,000 that would be matching funds to match what they're putting into their down payment for their home, up to $6,000. And if the people live here for a period of five years and keep the property up the way they're supposed to, that loan would be extinguished. So the council feels and the mayor that this is something that will be a great program that will help to revitalize our neighborhoods, and we're really excited about getting that passed hopefully at the next meeting and making those funds available. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just think it's a little bit fitting that tonight we gave the award to Ms. Karen McKay, and October is Breast Cancer Month, so what's left of the month, so be aware of that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Hernandez, if you have anything?
Yes, I just want to remind everybody, the Veterans Day Parade is coming up November 10th. It's also the Marine Corps' birthday, 238 years. If anybody would like to have a ride or would like to ride in a parade with me and a truck, please let me know. Thank you.